You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of ABK Media Group. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney, sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County every day at 9:00 AM. Southern living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, all my Gwinetians out there in Gwinnett land and all of you around the world listening to the sound of my voice. It's almost Christmas. Happy Christmas Eve. Today is December the 24th. Alright, we got one more day. So if you, those of you who like opening gifts, midnight, you can open up one, just one. That's a tradition in my house. At midnight, everybody's allowed to open one gift. So they pick the one they want to open, then you gotta wait till the next morning to open the rest of them. But anyway, it's a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County. I mean, it's gonna be a beautiful day. When I tell you beautiful, it's 53 degrees right now. It's going up to a high of 68. It is gonna be a beautiful day. Yes, it is. And I'm so excited about the day. My family is here. I'm super duper excited about that. We have a house full. So we had eight. So right now, it's about, let me see, five, 10, 11, 11 of us. And we adding four more tonight. So we gonna have like 15 people spending the night at my house tonight. So this gonna be a wonderful, wonderful Christmas. I'm looking, because we all, they gonna all stay tonight. Yep, they gonna all stay tonight. So we gonna have a good time tonight. I'm looking forward to it. Eggnog. So today is actually National Eggnog Day, right? We gonna have some eggnog and play some games. My daughter said she wanna play Jenga. I've never played Jenga. I like to play Spades, but I ain't got nobody to play Spades with. Because the only person know how to play Spades is my brother and I. My nephew knows how to play, but he's, he has to go back because, oh, he has to leave today because he's a coach at Mississippi State, and they have a bowl game, and he needs to be there to go to the bowl game. So I'm a little bit bummed out about that because he won't be here, but you know, we gonna have some fun for him. He has to go to work. That's his job. He's a coach, college coach. You gotta do what he gotta do. Would love to have him here with us though, for the rest. He was been here for, for the last about four days. And so we had a chance to really just spend some time together. Love him to life. You know, he's been my heart for a long time. All the kids, I love all the kids. My kid, my grandbaby, my niece, my nephew, they're like my kids. I love them to life. I told somebody one time, we was, I think I told your mom, we were at the park at one of the football games, and we were saying something. I said, y'all kill a rock for them kids. And she said, kill a rock? I was like, yep, that's how much I love them. That's how much I love those kids. Anyway, so today is a great day, great day here in Gwinnett County. I'm excited about it because it's Christmas Eve. I'm a, I like, when Thanksgiving comes, like after, 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 um, after, um, after Halloween, I get excited about the holidays. Because Christmas and, and Christmas and Thanksgiving are my most favorite holidays, right? Fourth of July, they alright. Because we always have, we always have things going on for the holidays. But for some reason, Christmas and Thanksgiving are my favorites. So I, I get, I don't even get excited about my birthday. Not like I get excited about Christmas and Thanksgiving. Everybody be all, they make a big deal about their birthday. Not me. Like, yeah, I can go to dinner and be just fine. I don't need to celebrate for the month. I don't need to make this big old to do about it. I can go out to dinner, go to movies or something, be just fine with my birthday. But Christmas and Thanksgiving, I love. Even though on Thanksgiving, I probably make one dish, just like I'm making on Christmas. I'm doing the cheesecake. So I gotta, I gotta get off the show and go do the cheesecakes, because that's what, that's my dish. My mother said to me, you not, you gotta work today. You gotta, you gonna do the show today? I was like, yep. Do you take a day off? I said, I try not to. And here's the crazy part. My schedule is gonna ramp up in 2020, because I got too many things going on. I got an awards event that I'm hosting. I'm super duper excited about that, because I'm not an events person, right? At least, let me say this. I was, I was not an event person. I am an event person now. I'm hosting two events. This year, I did Pop-Up Small Business Saturday, which was right after Thanksgiving. That was, that's to celebrate small business and shop local. I'm gonna be doing that again next year. Hopefully with a major partner coming on board. We talked about it briefly. We're gonna have a meeting in a couple of weeks about the whole thing. I mean, a major sponsor. I'm super crazy excited about that. And that's gonna be really cool. And then I'm gonna be doing this awards. So I'm gonna be doing awards. I'm, I'm not gonna announce it now, because I gotta go and put a few things in place. But I will be announcing it next week. So I'm, I'm excited about that. Because I wanna, I wanna do a black tie event. I wanna, I wanna recognize people. And so I decided I wanted to do an awards. First, I thought about doing a summit, right? I'm, ah, we could do a summit, we could do a conference. I don't wanna do a conference or summit, because we have a lot of summits and conferences. I wanna do something where people get to dress up and look beautiful and feel important, at least for one day. That's what I wanna do. And I'm, I'm excited about that. So I'll be talking more about that. But let's get on to the show. I wanna wish a happy birthday to Sterling Ha, Sterling Harris. It's your birthday, Sterling. Wish you happy, happy birthday. Enjoy your day. So Sterling get it good, right? He gets it good. Like, today is Christmas Eve, so he get a, either he gets it good, or he get gypped. It's one or the other. I don't know what you want it is, but happy birthday, Sterling. Because you know, his birthday is right before Christmas. So do he get more gifts because it's his birthday? Or do he get gypped because it's his birthday? You know what I mean? Like, do you get gypped because my birthday falls right before Christmas? Or do I get extra stuff? Like, my birthday falls in February, right? But it, it's a week apart. So I get it, I get a gift for my birthday, and then I get Valentine's Day. So I get two gifts. My mother's birthday falls like it too. Her birthday falls in May. So she get her birthday, and she get Mother's Day. Yes, I know, we are the lucky ones. Those are the gift-giving months. But anyway, let's move on to the Horus, because brought to you by noted astrologer Michael Theis. And today is December the 24th, Christmas Eve. And we gonna kick it off like we normally do. And that's with Aries. You may find yourself in an emotional fix if you interfere in other people's problems. Mm, mm, mm. You can ask for favors or run ideas by those who will be able to support your objectives. Be cautious while traveling. Minor accidents are evident. Listen, mind your business today. It's a beautiful day. Aries, don't go in there trying to fix nobody. Just let people handle their own stuff. I'm just saying. It's Christmas Eve. Don't mess it up for nobody. Don't mess it up for yourself. Taurus, you have to do a lot of running around, so be prepared to fall short of your expectations. Problem, people, personal problems may be hanging over your head, but don't confront the situation. Get involved in groups that, that are creative in nature. Oh, personal problems may be hanging over your head, but don't confront the situation. Not today. Not, not this week. Not, not today or tomorrow. Enjoy, Taurus. Let it hang there. It's hanging already. Let it hang. Don't confront it. Today is not the day. Enjoy yourself. Enjoy your family. Enjoy your friends. Enjoy yourself. Gemini, try to calm down emotionally, but be personal about personal financial matters. Unexpected bills may set you back. You can make positive changes in your homes. Listen, Gemini, calm down. Just, just be calm. And know, be still and know that it's all gonna work out for the good. Yes, I'm trying to live my life that way. It's hard. I ain't gonna lie. It's hard. But just, listen, Gemini, just be still and know that it's all gonna work out for the good. The financial matter that's got you emotionally rattled right now, it's gonna work out for you good. Cancer, your intellectual charm will entice mates who have common interests. Mmm, nice. Okay, Cancer. Take a look at contracts and agreements that have been offered to you. Things are looking up. Things are looking up, Cancer. Here's the thing. If you don't understand what you're looking at, at the, on the contracts and agreements, let some, a professional, let a professional take a look. You don't want it to cause you some grief and heartache later on. You can look at it. But if you don't understand what the heck you're looking at, give it to a professional. Let him take a look at it. I'm just telling you. Alright, Leo, new hair, new outfit, new you. Okay, Leo getting new before the New Year's. I hear you, Leo. Be sure to think twice before you say something that might hurt your partner's feelings. Your interests could lead you down avenues you would never, you never realized existed. Mm, that sounds enticing and intriguing. A new, a new hairdo, a new outfit, a new you, and then you gonna go down some, some path that you've never gone down? You never even knew they were out there? Okay, you son, you got a lot going on. That's great, Leo. Enjoy the day. Virgo, disputes on the home front may be hard to avoid. If they're too demanding, reconsider this union. You should sit down with someone you trust and work out a budget that will enable you to save a little extra. Listen, listen. You at home today. I know it's Christmas Eve, and some disputes may be hard to avoid, but if you can, avoid them at all costs, at all costs. You wanna have a good time. You wanna have a good time, Virgo. If you can, if you can avoid them, avoid them. I'm just saying. I, this, I love this holiday. I wanna have a good time. Alright, listen, I'm going to a song. I'll be right back after this song to give you more of the Horus, because brought to you by noted astrologer Michael Theis. You're listening to the Good Morning Gwinnett Show. Welcome back to the Good Morning Gwinnett Show. You're listening to Audrey Bell Kearney and a daily Horus, because brought to you by noted astrologer Michael Theis. And we're gonna pick it up, excuse me, with Libra. You may jump from the frying pan into the fire if you make a move today. You can make money, but try not to let that slip through your fingers. Don't upset elders in your family who don't understand your present situation. Listen, be careful of that hot grease. That's all I'm gonna say. If you gonna jump out the frying pan into the fire, you got grease on you, you are gonna burn up, Libra. Yes, you can make some money, but don't let it slip through your fingers. And don't listen. Be careful. Just be careful. That's all I'm saying. Scorpio, you may wanna clear the air where older relatives are concerned. Don't let others take advantage of your good nature. You'll be dropping friends for no apparent reason. Wow, Scorpio, you just gonna drop people? You not gonna tell them why you dropping them? That's kinda crazy. What's up with that? I'm just saying. I'm just saying. People be like, what's wrong with him? What's wrong with her? I'm calling him. For no apparent reason. Ooh, I don't know. I don't think I have any Scorpio friends. That's kinda strange, too. Sagittarius, your pursuits may end up being fruitless. Plan events like camping or whitewater rafting. Be aware that joint financial ventures could fall apart. Yeah, your, your pursuits may be fruitless. I know Sagittarius, yours is not that good. Go, go camping. You got some joint ventures that's gonna fall apart. The stars is not on your side today, unfortunately. Sorry. Capricorn, keep important information to yourself. Jealousy may be a contributing factor to your emotional ups and downs. You may meet the special person if you attend fundraising functions. Listen, Cap, keep your business to yourself. I'm just saying. If you don't want it out there, don't tell nobody. That, that's, that's the truth in everything. If you don't want your business to be not, to be not known, don't tell nobody. Keep it to yourself. I know sometimes you just feel like you need to talk to somebody. Sit down to the mirror and talk to yourself. Now, if you go tell it, then it's on you. But if you tell it to somebody else, it's still on you. Aquarius, don't give out any personal information that you don't wanna spread around. Just said that for Capricorn. Dealing with the in-laws or relatives would not be in your best interest. Wait and get all the information before consulting your boss. Listen, Aquarius, I just said it. I just said it. Keep your business to yourself. If you don't want it out, don't tell nobody. I'm just saying. Alright, and my fellow fish boysies, your charisma will no doubt attract a lot of attention. Is that, is that right? Make a point on working on yourself. You could be attracting individual, individuals who are anything but good for you. Listen, so I'm be, I'm, I'm attracting attention, but it's the wrong attention? Listen, how do we get rid of that? I'm working on myself right now, though, for real. I'm all into the, you know, energy healing and all that good stuff, and from the universe, and relying on God, and being still and know. I'm all, I'm right there. I'm right there. So I'm working on myself. I'm working on myself. I speak. I'm, I am. I still listen to all the Horoscopes I got for you today. I'll be back again tomorrow to bring more of the Horoscopes from astrologer, noted astrologer Michael Theis. But right now, let's move on to some news you can use. Alright, so apparently, if you live in the city of Lawrenceville, your, your, your electric is gonna go up three percent. Yep, yep, yep. I know some people probably happy with that. That's about, that's about, let me see, let me see. Okay, so following a review of the market rates, the city of Lawrenceville Council, the city, Lawrenceville City Council recently voted to, according to, uh, the vote follows careful consent and cost of delivering electric service as well as a desire to maintain market rates and keep any needed increases as low and incremental as possible for the residents. The city will increase the base charge, both residential and commercial by $3 per month, and usage rates by 0.0015 per kilowatts after the first 600 kilowatts of use. This represents a through the increase for a residential resident. So your bill by $3. Oh, is that really? Not really. Nah, I guess, I mean, if it was $3 per kilowatt, maybe, but it's like $3 per month. I know some people probably like, it's going up. They probably having a fit right now. I don't know. I think this, I don't think that's a big deal. $3. That's just me. I wouldn't be getting all upset about $3. Yeah. So the city claims it still maintains competitively, competitively low market rates, and with increase will remain lower than others offering the same stuff. So I suppose they're saying they, they are still below the average, even with the increase? That's a good thing. Could've went up $10. Their people, people really been peeing in their pants. What is going on? $10? Yeah, it did. And it went up $3. So a cup of coffee one more for one day, because you know, we spend, some people spend a lot of, say, some, I had, I had a training. I did my, um, podcast startup live training this past Saturday, and I went to Dunkin' Donuts because we need some stuff. So I got some donuts, and I got a, the jug of coffee, right? That freaking coffee thing was $16, $16.99. I was like, what? It was a lot. Well, maybe it wasn't a lot, but I'm like, $16, put it back. That's what I really wanted to say. Because I don't even drink coffee. But I wanted to make sure that everybody was gonna be good, because we gonna be there for five hours. And you need to stay awake. So I got a whole jug of coffee. I did drink some, though. Coffee's alright. Like, I like, I like, um, a coffee colada. Iced coffee with whipped cream. Like, yeah, right? It's not even, yeah, that's what I like. Just straight coffee. But I did drink, I did drink the coffee, because I paid $16.99 for the coffee. I had to drink it, and some of it. Alright, so there's a new parking deck at Gwinnett County Courthouse is now open. It is open for the use. The entirety of Gwinnett County's new courthouse parking deck is now open. Phase two of the deck at Gwinnett Justice and Administration Center, which houses courtrooms, government offices, open this week, adding 600 new spaces. Throw in that, with 850 spaces that was open in March, it's almost 1,500 new spaces there. So you need a place to park, you will have it. There's, that is not an issue. Not there. With the growing increase of all the residents moving into Gwinnett County, they, Gwinnett County realized they're gonna have to open up more, uh, courtrooms, and you know, a courtroom need jobs. Because you got a lot of people. There are a lot of people moving into Gwinnett County. A lot of people aren't happy about that, but hey, what can you do? The larger project is already underway, and will include, um, adding another, a brand-new 180,000 square foot building with a large jury assembly room, four additional courtrooms, and room for several more to be added in the future. So the parking deck is there. Now they about to expand, add in some more courtrooms, jury rooms, all that stuff. Yep. So now you gotta place a park, if you having a problem. You gotta place, and, and listen, if they're expanding like that, that need jobs. And what do I always say about more jobs? Make sure you ready. If you wanna work for the county, you need to be talking to people right now, networking, find out what, what, what they're gonna need when they expand the building, who they're gonna need to fill those positions, and what requirements, what are they looking for? Be ready. Make sure your resume is ready and filled in. Everything is together. So when it's time to come, you could put your resume in there. Alright? So Swanee approves a plan for a 90-bed assisted living facility. Following a recent public hearing, the Swanee City Council voted to approve, um, a request for annexation and rezoning to allow for an assisted living facility at the intersection of Guinness Ferry Road and North Hope Parkway. The project will include a 90-bed assisted, uh, for, uh, blah, blah. I got tie tongue. The project will include a 90-bed assisted, assisted living facility with some, um, memory care units. Amenities will include social and recreational activities, meal services, housekeeping, shuttle transportation services, assistance with daily activities, and 24-hour emergency response. So that's coming to Swanee. Okay, assisted living, that's good. Memory care unit, because you know, there's a lot of people suffering from Alzheimer's and dementia. And so, you know, to have that memory care unit there, that's gonna be a lot of people. Because it, I think it's hard on people when, when someone they love starts to, you know, fall from dementia or Alzheimer's, because it's, it's not a lot you can do. You just gotta watch them like, like a baby. Like, I have a friend, his mother is suffering from it now in Virginia. And whenever I talk to him, tells me how tough it is, how hard it is, you know. One, you gotta see the person that you, your family member that you love go through that. And two, um, then you gotta be the person, especially you wanna be a caretaker. If you want, if you don't wanna put your loved ones in an assisted, assisted, I just can't, I can't imagine. That's a lot of work. My uncle did it. His wife, uh, and it hit so quick. She had dementia, and it just, two years, it was, it was bad. And then she was gone. But going on to another song, we, we be right back at his next song to give you the rundown about what's going on in and around. Stay tuned. Welcome back to the Good Morning Gwinnett Show. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. So Auburn has been awarded $96,000 Living Centers Initiative Grant by the Atlanta Regional Commission. The LCI program is designed to help cities re-envision their communities as vibrant, walkable places that offer increased mobility options and to facilitate planning to qualify for federal transportation funds. Since 2000, the program has helped 120 communities qualify for $344 million for transportation projects resulting from LCI studies. The downtown Auburn plan will be constructed with the combination of funding sources and planning processes. City officials and other members of the downtown Auburn team met recently to put together the LCI study agenda and schedule. An advisory group of residents will be selected to help bring a variety of perspectives to the plan. The LCI study gives, um, gives us a chance to line up for some funding, said Mayor Linda Bleachinger. But we also wanna use this opportunity to gain further, more specific input, input from the public. So they're gonna take that. They wanna talk to you. So when the opportunity comes up, um, for the public to weigh in, make sure to be there. For more information about this, you can go to tinyurl.com. That's www.tinyurl.com backslash Auburn, Auburn LCI. Tinyurl.com backslash Auburn LCI. And when it's time for it to come available for the public to get involved and voice your opinions, make sure to do so. This is your opportunity. I'm just saying. The Rotary Club of Gwinnett, Lawrenceville, Duluth, and Gwinnett Summit has recently hosted a dedication ceremony for the Rotary International Peace Pole on the Lawrenceville lawn. The peace pole highlights the Rotary Club's United Mission and Purpose within the community. Lawrenceville is honored to have the peace pole in our city. We are. That's my city. On behalf of the Fort Gwinnett Rotary Club involved, said Mayor, Mayor Judy Johnson, Judy Jordan Johnson. The peace pole offers a universal message of peace for all people and promotes the city's vision for being an inclusive community that celebrates the diverse and rich cultures that reside in Gwinnett and the grid Atlanta area. This, and it, and it is, we're very diverse here. And it's so funny, because everybody I've met since I've been here, pretty much all of them are from somewhere else, including me. Each peace pole bears the message, may peace prevail on earth in the four most prevalent languages spoken in Gwinnett County, English, Spanish, Korean, and Vietnamese. So you got, this is the message, may priests prevail on earth. And it's in English on the pole, Spanish on, I'm going down and take a picture of that pole today. I, I never saw that. I wish I had known about this. Um, English, Spanish, Korean, and Vietnamese on the pole. That's pretty cool. Huge populations here. Huge, huge populations. And that's a, that's a great thing. Now, I like this thing right here. I think this is, this is exciting. Because I'm in media, so I like anything media-related, including film, and podcasts, and radio, and movies. Anyway, Sugar Hill has announced its inaugural Broad Street Film Festival to be hosted February 21st through the 23rd at the Eagle Theater located at 529 Broad Street. The deadline for film submission has been extended to January 21st. I didn't even know about this. Like, we should've been talking about this all year long. I would've put a film in the festival. I would've had one done. I had, I got a couple of good film ideas I would love to put in. Now, here's the thing. I gotta try to pull something together by January 21st. I think I can, though. I think I can. I think I'm gonna do them. I'm not gonna tell you. But anyway, I think I'm gonna try to pull something together. Documentary style, documentary style. So the Broad Street Film Festival hopes to be gathering, um, be a gathering of storytellers and audience seeking new stories, experience, and perspectives. The program will include different genres of short films, comedy documentaries, as well as a high, college and high school submissions. And the event will include conversation with filmmakers, panel discussions, Q and As, keynote speakers, and live music events. Sound like it's gonna be nice. When I first moved here, my first speaking engagement was at the Gwinnett Film Festival down at the Infinite Energy Center. That was my first, my first, um, my first speaking engagement. I was excited about that, too. I was, I had a whole room to myself talking about distribution, because at that time, I had just launched my company, HerTube, which was distributed on Roku. At that time, just Roku. Um, now, it's on Roku and Amazon Fire TV. As a matter of fact, I'm launching a new channel called Noise TV. I'm excited about, listen, I got a lot of things to be excited about. I'm just saying, you guys don't even understand. I got a lot to be excited about. But anyway, I'm launching a new channel called Noise TV, and that's gonna be on Amazon and Roku, and it's gonna be all about the noise makers in the industry, in music industry, business industry. Yes, I'm excited about that, Noise TV. Um, the goal of the event is to raise money to have a high school and college scholarship available to students participating in Broad Street Film Festival. So listen, this is exciting. Um, I'm excited about this. For more information and submission guidelines, you can go to www.broadstreetfilmfest.com, www.broadstreetfilmfest.com, and check it out. Do film. I'm thinking I'd be a part of this. I want to be a part of it. I really, really do. I love it. I think it's great. It's a lot of creative people here in, in, in Georgia, and some great filmmaking opportunities and just a lot, just a lot in general that you can do. With, with, there's a, there's, there's, uh, two companies out there. One is called Sixty Second Docs, which stands for documentaries. They put together the most amazing documentaries in sixty seconds that I've ever seen. I'm talking about amazing. Like, you, and it's only a minute, like, maybe a minute and a second. They're amazing. Like, get a chance to go look at them, Sixty Second Docs. Some amazing stuff. All right, so, um, First Baptist Church of Grayson is having a, um, they're having a communion, candlelight communion this evening from four-thirty to five-thirty, if you want to take place, uh, participate in that. That's gonna be located at twenty-one forty-two Loganville Highway, and that's in Grayson. That's this evening from four-thirty to five-thirty P.M. Um, that's a, that's a communion, candlelight communion this evening. First Baptist, First Baptist Church of Grayson. You can participate if you would like to, four-thirty to five-thirty, twenty-one forty-two Loganville Highway. And if you have questions about that, Nest and Grace have got questions, you can call seven-seven-zero-nine-six-three-three-six-one-zero. Again, that number is seven-seven-zero-nine-six-three-three-six-one-zero. Event categories is for anybody, anybody who want to show up. All right, so I had, I got short news today, because it's a holiday. My mom was already saying, you're not off. Everybody's off. I'm not off. I'm gonna be off. I'm gonna take some time off, because I got an eight-day cruise coming up in, um, in June, and, um, so that's gonna be eight days I'll be away. I still want to see if I can find somebody to fill in for me, right? I don't wanna, I don't wanna be gone. But anyway, I'm gonna go to my last song, then I'm gonna, then I'm gonna come back and give you my inspiration of the day here on Christmas Eve. You're listening to the Good Morning Gwinnett Show, and I'm your host, Audrey Bell Kearney. Welcome back. So listen, guys, that's all I got for you today. But before I go, I want to give you a word of inspiration, because it's a beautiful day. It's a beautiful day here in Gwinnett, and it's Christmas Eve, and I'm excited about that. But I just want to, you know, I said earlier, I'm gonna have a house full of people, and I think that's because I am the way I am. I'm the person that I am, and so, um, when I saw this, this word right here, it kinda, it did something to me, because I'm like, wow, is that what it means? But anyway, here's what the word is for the day. Say, "If you're someone people count on, particularly in difficult moments, that's a sign of a life lived honorably." Ah, that touches me. "If you're someone people count on, particularly in difficult moments, that's a sign of a life lived honorably." Rachel Maddow said that, and you know what? I take, I accept that. People lean on me all the time. Fifteen people in my house, this and tonight, that's a sign, I guess, of being honorable, of living an honorable life. I try to live my life with integrity. I try to live my life on purpose. I don't know what it is. I just try to do the best I can. Um, I try to live my life intentionally, and that's what you gotta think about. You know, sometimes you feel like you're not making a difference to anybody, but you are. You know, if you find that people live, lean on you, they expect a lot from you, because remember, there's a saying, "To, to, to whom much is given, much is required." You may not even think you're giving a lot, right? But when, when you look back in retrospect, just look back for a second. I know I got big dreams, big plans, big aspirations, aspirations, and I'm thinking, man, I hadn't hit the numbers I want to hit, but when I look back at my life, and I look back over the last twenty years, I've done some amazing things and had some wonderful times, met some great people, you know, but all while being there for my family when they needed me. All while being there for my family, especially my mom and my daughter, my husband, my brother, and my uncle, just being there. So I guess I'll take that. I mean, I guess I'll take that, that I have, that's a sign of a life lived honorably. So listen, guys, I'll be back again tomorrow for a short show. Just wish you a Merry Christmas. My mother already said to me, you should take tomorrow off. I'm not gonna take tomorrow off. I'm gonna come and bring you a little bit of news, your horoscopes, play a couple of songs, and wish you a Merry Christmas. But go ahead, be with your family right now. It's Christmas Eve, and it's about to go down in my house. We gotta cook for fifteen people. So it's about, it's about to get, my husband loves to cook, so that, that brings him joy. That's his purpose. That's his passion. He loves it. That's what he loves. I love business. I love being an entrepreneur. I love all that. My brother love football. We got our passion, our purpose. The kids are trying to figure out what they want to do, but we know what we want to do. We know what we love doing, and we do it in all different facets. I do it as an entrepreneur. My husband do it just because he love to do it for the family and friends, and my brother do it because he feel like he has to make a huge difference in, in the kids and the lives of young men who are growing up to be, um, uh, men. All right, so listen, I'll be back again tomorrow, God willing. Enjoy your family today, because I'm gonna enjoy mine. Thank you again for listening. You could've been anywhere in the world, but you spent the last forty-three minutes with me, and I appreciate you so much. If you missed any episode of the show, go to goodmorninggwinnett.com and listen there. Also, go to the App Store and download the app. I talk about the apps now, because I realize what the problem was. If you're having a problem, you got a iPhone, uh, and your phone is on vibrate, you would not be able to hear the livestream or, um, recorded, uh, episodes of the app if your phone is on vibrate. So take the phone off vibrate if you want to listen to the show via the app. Go ahead, download the app from the Google Store and from the, from the Apple Store. I'll be back again tomorrow. Thank you so much for listening. Enjoy your holiday. Merry Christmas, y'all. Bye now.